Session to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob, can you move your mic closer? Move your mic closer. I just was getting feedback over the weekend that we all need to speak into our mic.
Okay, we'll start with our weekly COVID update, Amber. Any changes?
Well, our Suffolk County, our Shelter Island official number is still at eighty-one, so we haven't had any new cases in a few weeks now. And the Suffolk County positivity rate for the last seven days dropped a little bit more, three point five percent down from three point nine percent last weekend. So we're just, and then nation as a whole, when I look at the New York Times every morning, is also trending down. So hopefully it stays that way as we all start to move indoors.
Okay, and I was hoping to see somebody from South Hampton Hospital Saturday, but the administration wasn't there. So we'll put a call in to see if there's going to be any updates on the, on the.
Boosters.
Boosters, thank you. Okay, next on the list is the ZBA chairman. We have a letter of resignation for, from Doug Matts. We have to do some more interviewing today for the position, but we also have to appoint the chairman. Amber, did you?
I am the liaison to that. And in speaking with both Doug and Phil, Phil has been the deputy chair and runs meetings when Doug hasn't been able to make it or when he's had to recuse himself. So he is the suggestion for.
That's Phil Diorio for the audience.
Yes, it's Phil Diorio. Yes. So he's the suggested replacement as chair.
And when does it, when does Doug, I know it's thirty days after the resignation.
Well, we accepted it on Friday, so it almost would make sense to retroactively appoint Phil as of Friday, just because over the weekend he and I had discussions because Ferry has an application coming before them and they were anxious to try and expedite it just because they, there were a couple of miscommunications there or something. So we're, Phil's been handling that. And I presume he spoke to you, Bob, about that, just because we have this thirty day notice, so we need to keep that in place, but.
So can we wait till the next town board meeting? Or do we need to do a special meeting next week?
I think he can be acting chair until we formally appoint on the. Yeah, so we can retroactively appoint him, because there's also compensation issues associated with that. And I spoke to both Doug and Phil about that, so the transition could be easier since of October first.
Okay. Okay, next thing on the agenda is a new holiday. As of twenty twenty-two, there's a new legal holiday, Juneteenth. And this year it was up to each town how they wanted to handle it. Next year it's a mandatory holiday. We, we, we can put it in place, but we will have to negotiate with the two bargaining units, with the highway and the police. So I think we need to come to a decision what we want to do so we can start that process. So we have it in place for twenty twenty-two. My, right now we have fourteen. I'm assuming it's fourteen paid holidays. It's a little bit different with some of the union stuff. Here's my suggestion. Right now we have, we have Martin Luther King Day, we have Lincoln's Birthday, and we have President's Day. My suggestion is we take Lincoln's Birthday out and replace it with Juneteenth rather than give an extra holiday. Let's just swap one for the other.
I don't have a problem with that. Reason being is that, you know, then we don't have an additional day that town is closed, as well as there's implications for double pay for people who work on these holidays. So then I guess we just would have to.
Well, first we have to decide if that's what we want to do, then we'd have to, you know, yeah, propose it to the unions. Jimmy?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Just want, I downloaded some stuff on June, Juneteenth. Actually ended slavery in the United States officially. I think Texas was one of the last places where it went through. Forty-nine of the fifty states recognized this as a, as a holiday. The only one being, I believe, is South Dakota, I believe, does not recognize it as a holiday. But once it's a federal holiday, post offices will be closed and it will be a federal holiday for federal employees.
Yeah, I gotta be honest, I was kind of surprised when I got back in office that we had Lincoln's Birthday off. I always assumed President's Day took care of Washington's Birthday and Lincoln's Birthday. So I was surprised when I saw that still on there, so.
Sure. Do you have any indication from the bargaining groups?
Not at all, not at all, Albert. That's why we have to do it now. Let's get started on it, you know, get it replaced by the end of the year.
History on it, though, where, you know, a school district should have been the first ones to jump on that. But yet Lincoln's Birthday, Washington's Birthday, on the twelfth and twenty-second of February. And rather than close school for those two days, then the oil embargo came through with OPEC. And then rather than open, close, open and close, they ended up having that February recess.
Spring break, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Became very popular. So they ended up combining Lincoln and Washington's Birthday and giving you that week off. And of course, then it became a, an actual nine day off because it was from, you know, Friday, end of Friday to the following Sunday night, you know? So it was nine days off. And that was an attempt by the school districts to save money for keeping the schools heated. I know that because coaching basketball, you'd go down in the gym, it would be set on a winter setting, which would be fifty-five degrees. So there wasn't a lot of sweating in practice. There was people coming with sweatshirts.
They worked hard.
They worked hard.
That's right.
To break a sweat, yeah.
Okay, so, so we're all in agreement, we can, so Bob, we have to decide, I guess we have to get in touch with Zook Min and how we proceed with, get in touch with the bargaining unions, okay? Okay. Next on the list is a foil request and procedures. I just want to just go over this and review it a little. There'll be a letter in the paper this week from the president of the Hay Beach Property Owners Association, basically stating his dissatisfaction with the way the town has responded to his foil request. And I spoke individually to each town board member, and I think we need to respond to this, and we, we will publicly. But Bob, can you just kind of, I know, Dottie, you're the foil officer for the town. Can you guys just give us a, what's involved? I mean, it used to be somebody come in and ask you for something and you'd give it to them. And now everything is, you know. Yeah, it's a lot easier. And, and just because, you know, you foil something, we can't give you documents we don't have. I mean, they're just, you know, not there. I think that's the case with the majority of this, that there are no documents relating to these questions. So Bob, do you want to?
Yeah, what do you want the procedure?
Yeah.
The short version is this, the, after receiving the request, it has to be acknowledged within five days. Now, during that time, you can give them the documents if they're readily available and the number of the smaller ones that's possible. Really, anything where they're asking, especially for correspondence, because we tend to have to look for the, through the computers for that. That is supposed to generally be provided within twenty days. If you're not going to be able to provide it within twenty days, you have to give a date certain when you believe you'll be able to provide that. If you then can't meet that deadline, you have to send another, a follow-up in writing saying that you weren't able to meet it, state the reason for that, and then, and then provide a new date. The other important thing to remember is that while foil is very broad law, there are certain things that are accepted. Anything that would be a privileged document, you know, attorney-client, those types of spousal privilege, anything of alder, estate privileges, anything that would threaten health and safety of any person, any document prepared for law enforcement that could possibly interfere with an investigation, any document which could make any computer networks vulnerable. And the important one, I think, is they call intra-departmental communications, non-final discussions in preparation of, of, of a policy.
Okay, Bob, to get more specific to this one, I mean, in this letter, given the town's decision to withhold the remaining documents, the association will take the necessary action to seek to compel the town to provide these documents. What, what decision did we make to withhold documents? That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't think we have withheld anything other, I expect there were some attorney-client stuff and attorney-client documents and probably some internal communications. That having been said, anything else has been provided. I think there's a, some thought out there that things are being done, you know, kind of a back.
Non-transparent.
Yeah, a back room kind of a way. And the fact of the matter is, the, the things that he was discussing specifically in that letter were never really discussed at length by any part of the town. The, the Gardener's Bay application, if you remember, everyone, all of the boards other than the ZBA were specifically directed not to discuss it. And they pretty much held to that. The ZBA would have discussed it, but they never got to it. So there were really never any significant discussions or communications to be had. The same thing with the, the second interest area, which was the request for, you know, information on zoning changes. So far, the extent of that has been one recommendation by the zoning board chairman and an acknowledgement by the board that he made that statement. Other than that, it was really just speculation at the Comprehensive Plan Committee about what they thought was going on. And, you know, but in fact, there weren't any discussions. If we don't discuss something, there's not going to be anything to turn over.
And again, just, I, you know, we're trying to nip this in the bud. It seems like there's all sorts of conspiracy theorists all of a sudden. And, you know, Dottie's the foil officer. She knows the procedure. She handles the procedure. If, if they request documents, you know, she'll email the specific person that, you know, has to present those documents. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I think, I think we're following the procedure, certainly to the letter of the law and, and sometimes going above that, trying to, you know, find anything we can that might be of use.
To, to the best of my knowledge, it was never discussed before the town board. You know, not on a Tuesday meeting, not on a Friday meeting, not an executive session. To the best of my knowledge, I never remember, you know, as far as I know, the only people that had the potential was the ZBA to discuss this. And I do remember us telling the other bodies, the other committees not to discuss this, still the ZBA, but the ZBA never got to it because the application was withdrawn. There wasn't a lot of support, you know, if you take a look at the, from what the rumors were, that Gardener's Bay Country Club never really got full endorsement from the membership to move forward with this proposal. That there was still a significant number, you know, somewhere in the forty, forty-two, forty-five percent of people that were members there that weren't really in favor. And if you remember correctly, that there were two things on the table that they were internally discussing there. I think they were discussing the housing issue for, for their employees and the water issue for their irrigating their golf course. And they both seemed to kind of, to the best of my memory, kind of rise up at about the same time. And there was, I think that created a split with the membership saying, no, I don't care less about the housing, I want the golf course to be green. And then they went towards the irrigation end of things where some of the membership said, no, you know, that they were looking at the housing end of things. I just, it, it just kind of maybe wasn't handled in the, in the best way, you know, coming out of there. But the town itself never, you know, I went back through my records and I went on my computer and I download, you know, I put in all the, the stuff that would apply and I couldn't come up with a single email on where we discussed, you know.
The other thing I would say that, that Bob touched on was, you know, the town board took a lot of heat for, and Mike Bebon in particular, for telling the committees that this was not a, on their agendas to discuss. And, you know, who are we to tell people what to discuss? And turns out it's a good thing that Mike had that hindsight.
Yeah.
So, okay, I just want to get it out there.
Well, I think just, just to.
Sure.
We said told committees not to discuss unless the ZBA requested their input.
Yes.
From discussion.
Right, right. Thank you.
One thing on that, Judge, just because we got kind of accused of being a gag order. There was nothing about that that would have prevented any particular member of any committee, if they individually wanted to speak out on their own, from going to the ZBA, going to a public hearing and making whatever opinion they had. No, we just didn't want it to be done in the committee setting, really for exactly these sort of reasons.
Right, okay. All right, thanks. Okay, next on the list is a continuation of our, looking at our town codes and definitions. And, and again, because it's a kind of a different world we're living in, making sure what we do and what it says we're supposed to do are the same thing. So Bob, you want to walk us through? I get, I like to start with the resident definition, definition of resident, if we could, because that's at the key to a specific application for moorings that we're holding on to.
The residency definition, I think we presented that one last week. I think everybody's had time at this point to look through it. So I guess the question is, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding what we had discussed? I'll read it if you like. Any natural, residence defines any natural person or legal entity that owns property situated in the town of Shelter Island or leases such property for a term of at least one year. Additionally, all members of the immediate family of any person who owns or leases such property, either in his own name or in the name of an entity, in which such person is the majority shareholder, managing partner, managing member or managing director, shall be considered resident so long as such immediate family members reside at the Shelter Island address of the principal owner.
Thank you, Judge. How about you, good?
You know what, I just wrestle with the, as you know about the conventional sense definition of a resident, that they actually live, somebody lives in the town. I, you know, if you could speak to that, Bob.
I'm not sure what you mean, but.
You know, that a resident typically is somebody who lives in the town.
I guess the problem with that because. How do you find what that is, is a really difficult thing. Is it, is there a time limit they have to be here? Is there? You know, the other problem with, I think we, the direction was from the board essentially, if we wanted to make sure that anyone who's a property owner was considered a resident.
Go ahead, just, you know.
I think, Albert, maybe, maybe to clarify to help you out a little bit, if it's specific, if residency itself is specific to one of the codes, it'll be, there'll be an addendum in that part of the code, right, Bob?
Yeah.
You know, to, to address that.
If, yeah, if, for example, you know, you must, you could add to moorings that, you know, in order to qualify for a residential mooring, you must be a natural person, you know, whether the property owner on Shelter Island for at least one year. You can add whatever, you know, qualifications you wanted to each individual thing. But I would do that in the code, not in definitions.
So this is the start.
Right, this is, this should be very broad.
I guess my comment to you, Albert, is what, like, what's code sections do you think we should be more restrictive?
You know, obviously more things of that nature. I have to go through. I'm just concerned.
Maybe docs and docs. No, just because I think in order to adopt this, don't we then, Bob, have to go through and make changes for all the different code sections? Unless, I mean, we have to review, we don't have to necessarily.
We, we are going to need to go through and do it, but I, I think we can start with this. All those, all those sections say is resident, so this will, this will cover it. And it's nice that we're doing it now in the fall because we have plenty of time to go through those.
I think the WMAC is going to probably want to spend some time on this definition, looking at this definition. And then, you know, I can understand that part block plus the, the board resident, and it's intended to be in a broad, in a broad sense. The thing about being specific and saying, you know, proof of residency, you know, how long? How many months do you have to live on the island in order to qualify, you know? How that it's enforced. Those could all be very sticky kind of points when it comes to establishing residency.
Then we need to do this sooner rather than later because we are sitting on eight mooring applications, awaiting the definition of resident. So if we're going to put something more restrictive, then we need to have that discussion and make that correction.
Well, yeah, I think there's no reason you can't proceed with this now and then follow up with the restrictions later because you're probably not going to run into a problem at this point.
Except for the fact that, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to pass the resolutions for the eight moorings and then change it so that it becomes more restrictive because then does it null and void those?
Well, it wouldn't void them. Your, your law is what it is at the time that the application is.
Yeah, the, the meeting is in eight days on the.
Unless you make it retroactive.
On a Wednesday, the WMAC would maybe be meeting, just to bring that point across to everybody.
I would be very reluctant to alter anything based on a general definition for a single committee or for a single thing. Because remember, this is going to affect things far beyond WMAC or Waterways.
What else do I do to go to Albert's point? Let's do the general definition then if we need to get, you know, more detailed in.
No, my thinking is, I mean, just that we've got these eight moorings out there, so if we're going to work on them, we need to work on the mooring definition of resident as well.
I agree.
Before we proceed, because I don't want to apply it now, but then change it later. And it's like, I just don't think that's a good idea. So I guess maybe have WMAC is meeting next week?
A week from tomorrow.
Okay, so maybe put them on alert to discuss this on the agenda.
Definitely, we'll get ahold of John immediately, make sure it's on the agenda as one of the top priorities to look at. And, and maybe get it out sooner to the committee.
Yeah, that would be good.
Committee, yeah, think about on there prior to the meeting so they can come in with some feedback right away. Okay.
Want to go down, down your list, Bob?
Yeah, just want to just run right down the.
Yeah, I did just to see where, you know.
All right, yeah, most of these are relatively, one's immediate family, and I made a revision over what you have. It's spouse, partner, children, including all natural, adopted or fostered children residing with the family, parents, siblings, grandparents and grandchildren. Your, your copy has an age requirement, which I took out at Amber's request. Any comments?
Nope.
Now we get into some real basic stuff, you know, one week, you know, for the purpose of the code, it's a period of any seven consecutive days. And month is a calendar month, each of the twelve periods. Parking permit is a sticker issued by the town of Shelter Island to park in those locations that set forth in the code where parking permit is required.
What, excuse me, just why we're there. When you get a, when somebody gets a weekly parking pass, what is that? Is that seven days when they pick it up, Tuesday to Monday or is it?
Whatever what they want.
Whatever one they, okay.
And want to start on Thursday, we start on Thursday through Wednesday.
Okay.
That's why we did it that way instead of a count, Friday week. Resident, we've discussed. Summer season is, is a new definition. That's May fifteenth through September fifteenth of each calendar year.
So we're going to coordinate that so everything.
That's going to coincide, that'll be everything.
Yeah, yeah.
We expanded that this year, right? We moved it back. And then I know with that beach access thing, somebody brought up the thing, well, why, you know, again, why not expand it further? I don't know. They were talking about May first to, you know, to September thirtieth. But I think, you know, I think this kind of covers it.
Does that be for beaches and parking and anything else where we're talking about a summer season?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so they're all the same.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Are we comfortable then moving forward to like next summer, sticking with the fifteen through the fifteen?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Town is defined as the town of Shelter Island, county of Suffolk, state of New York, excluding the incorporated village of Jering Harbor. We get to an employee, now that, a lot of these, for example, employee is come basically from the New York State General Construction Law. So it's any person holding a town position by election, appointment or employment in the service of the town, whether or not compensated or volunteer, expressly authorized to participate in town-sponsored volunteer program, committee, board, commission, district council or other agency, department or unit of the government of the town of Shelter Island, but shall not include the independent contractors. Term employee shall include a former employee, is her a state or judicially appointed representative?
Was this in there or are you adding this?
This was in there. It was also New York State language. Town is a duplicate, I'm taking that out. Days are defined as all days, other than Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays. Saturday, Sunday is legal holiday, should excluded in computing the number of days with which any action may be taken or notice given within the terms of this article.
Did you just give an illustration of that, Bob, of where the weekends and holidays are taken out, where it becomes a factor?
Yeah, if you have, you're given seven, you know, twenty days to respond to something.
Yeah.
It's basically twenty business days.
Okay, all right.
How does it work with respect to like noticing? So.
It doesn't apply to like the ZBA notices and.
It does not, okay.
But if you, if you say you have twenty days to remediate a particular problem, that's twenty business days, not any weekends and holidays.
Correct. Same with a foil request?
No, foil request is New York State law.
Okay.
I can tighten the days up a little bit, that's why. Department is any office, department, board or other agency of the government of the town of Shelter Island. Grievance is any claimed violation, misinterpretation or alleged equitable application of any existing laws or duly established rules, procedures, regulations, administrative orders or work rules of the town of South, South, should we, St. stole this from them.
Yeah.
Or a department thereof which relate to or involves supervision of employees, provided however that such terms should not include any matter involving an employee's rate of compensation, retirement benefits, disciplinary proceeding or any other matter which is otherwise reviewable pursuant to law or any rule or regulation having enforceable effect of law.
Now, that's, that's grievance. That, is that definition for the bargaining units too, or they have their?
Yeah, they have, well, they have their own definition of grievance in their contract.
Okay.
Generally, the way that the interpretation goes is the more specific definition will apply. So if there's some, this will be the general definition, then if there's something specific in a contract or in a section of the code, then that would apply.
Okay.
It's superseded. Immediate supervisor, the employee or officer of the next highest level of authority above the employee in the department wherein the grievance exists and who normally assigns and supervises the employee's work and approves his time record or evaluates his work performance.
Bob, with that one, you know, Mike and I spent a lot of time on the, organizational chart. Do we need to adopt that and make it official so we have the, you know, the order of who's who?
The organizational chart?
Yeah.
Certainly wouldn't be a bad idea, okay.
It will kind of fit in with chapter sixteen, won't it?
Yeah.
Which we're going to do now.
Yeah, we can discuss, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Municipal buildings, another state, when a building of a facility owned or occupied. Municipal buildings, another state, when a building of a facility owned or occupied by the town of Shelter Island. That is a thousand square feet or larger.
Why does it have to be a thousand feet of large with the town?
It doesn't. That was, that was, that's, uh, what it was. If you wanted to change that, we certainly could.
Would you say that the town? Need to put square, please?
There, there are buildings on town owned property. That are less than a thousand square feet. What?
Yeah. Well, it would just be considered a town owned building. It wouldn't, you could, you can take that. We can remove the square footage if you want. It's up to.
What, what, what's it, you?
There's not particularly a.
I'm thinking of Dickerson Pond where you have two sheds that are less than a thousand, probably less than a thousand square feet.
You got the bond back either.
Is there ramifications if it's, if it's considered a municipal building, do you need to be ADA compliant or, or other stipulations?
That's a good question. I'm not actually certain about that.
Let's look into it.
I would say it probably does. No, I'm not. I'll leave it as a thousand for now, but I will look into that.
Yeah, let's look into that one.
Yeah.
I would think so.
See if there's an ADA. All right.
Department head, yeah, that's. That's pretty self explanatory.
Yeah. Boy, pointed by the town board who heads any department in the town that's subsequent to supervisory control or permanent. Nature of our other municipal employees.
Good.
Yeah.
Energy utilities, I think those are standard.
Energy is generally really just a, they're dictionary definitions, basically. Places of lodging, uh, place where people can stay for a short period of time, including but not limited to. Hotels, motels, tourist cabins, camps, rooming houses, short term rentals, guest colleges and ins. That's just a definition so that we can include all those in a single. Thing for the purposes of the rental law.
Anything about, um, in terms of temporary lodging on a boat?
Not sure we allow. Lodging on boats, we can add it if you'd like.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just. Wondering. I, I, I know it in reality.
Transitting mooring locations.
I think of the implication. I'm going to put that in, in bold.
Well, including but not limited to, so we can discuss that. You know, this is a separate item.
Yeah, I still don't think of what the, uh. Implications would be of that. Look where it is in the code.
Right.
Off road vehicle, basically any vehicle you can. Is designed for driving off road. It's in there for various, you know, beach driving, that sort of specific things. Let's see. Park is a publicly operated privately owned property or probably or privately owned property. The use, enjoyment, or appreciation of citizens. And which may have improvements designed to facilitate recreational or passive activities. Including any premises owned by the town of Shelter Island, the County of Suffolk, or the State of New York. Or any combination thereof. And or managed by the town of Shelter Island or its licensees for recreation or open space purposes. Specifically, but not exclusively included are all town parks. Town landings, town beaches, and all shoreline access points. Vehicle.
What about preserves? Different designation or is that somehow in this?
Actually, we probably should add that. And preserves.
Which really are. Places for recreational activity.
No. That's whose recreation.
Says all open space purposes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Good. Vehicles, any self proposed transportation device mounted on tracks, treads, wheels, or any number of combination thereof. Other than off road vehicles defined herein. Every device operator driven on public highways is propelled by any power other than muscle power. Except an electrical driven. Now, there's the three very basics. New York State required exceptions.
People with handicaps that are operating, you know.
So this is taken from, uh, New York State or?
Yeah, it's from the VTL.
Okay. I mean, this isn't going to, this doesn't define what the police do with.
Our, our, our code doesn't have anything to do with their traffic enforcement.
Right.
Okay. Other than parking.
Right.
Building inspector, a member of the building department who expects construction determines. Conformity of the unified code, uh, code, the energy code, and local code. And approved plans and one who inspects unoccupied buildings for violations of the building code. Uh, makes field inspections of building construction alteration and repair. And land usage, building, land and development modification.
You said unoccupied, but it's occupied.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Building permit. Is basically a building permit. Document authorizing the holder to erect a building or structure of a particular kind on a particular lot. And a building permit should also include a building permit which is renewed, amended, or extended pursuant to the provision of the law. CFO, CFOC. Document issued to the owner or president asserting that the premises have been built and maintained according to the provisions of the building and zoning ordinances. The CFO is evidence that the building complies substantially with the plan and specifications that have been submitted.
So what's this certificate of compliance?
Certificate of compliance is issued in the event of a preexisting nonconforming where they aren't able to issue a CFO.
Okay. Now, one of the things that have always been a bug is that. Once the CFO is issued, the certificate of occupancy is issued. Then. The town. Does not have the right to go back into those premises and, you know, three months after the fact when allegedly there might have been some alterations or a bathroom added or something, a bedroom added. Legally, you don't have, the building department doesn't have that authorization to be able to do those kinds of things. Am I right or wrong legally on that, Bob? Because it's a bone of contention on a lot of people that once. The person gets the CFO. And a phone call is made and then. There are some other further modifications done to what was already done. To add some things that were not really covered in the CFO. And.
There. The answer is they're not allowed to go back in on their own volition. They can ask for permission to come in. Or if they have the evidence that there is something going on, they can get a warrant and go in.
Okay.
But they can't just walk in front of.
So I understand that if, that if some, somebody has done something wrong and it, and, you know, they're not going to give you permission to go in. And then you have to seek a warrant to be able to do that.
Right.
Uh, what, what's, what is the kind of? What kind of proof would the neighbor have if you're not allowed on the person's property? To be able to justify a warrant? To send the building department back in. And that's, and I just bring it up because it happens right now. I mean, it does happen. People. Bring this up around town and, and, uh. What kind of evidence in your legal opinion? Would you have to have?
Oh, it's all, um. The same as for a criminal case. It's just a matter of having probable cause. You know, you have to convince the court that there was, there's probable cause for the warrant.
So if you know the CFO was approved for three bedroom, for instance. And you see six adults in the house, that, that's not an issue, or a family of five or six people. But what if you saw five or six cars in a driveway and you counted fourteen people there for a week? At a time. Would that be probable cause or no? Because we, we, we've had that happen.
It comes, it, it really depends on the circumstances of each individual. As a general rule. The, the court will not count cars.
Okay.
Um, you know, that, that's usually not enough in and of itself. You might have house guests for the, you know, day or whatever. It does not prove that they're living there. You know, you need something more than that.
See, that's a slippery slope that people don't understand though, that it's not clear in people's minds that. You know, I understand, uh. Two things could happen, you know, a bunch of family members come out, there's a change of plans, they decide to spend the night. Uh, and some people sleep on the couch, you know, for the night and they go home the next day. Another thing would be have a party where. And you serve alcohol and, uh, two people that. Coming from, you know, Nassau County or not in condition to drive home. So you say, hey. Spend the night, do the responsible thing and, and they throw them on a couch. But then again, when, if you've, if you've noticed a trend. Week after week. Of more than those six adults in the house that's being rented next door to you, that is but three bedrooms. You know, I, I just think that people, you know, they say, what is, I'm not allowed to go on a property, can't take, can't do this, can't do that. And you're saying, and it seems that the. The lawyer, on the other hand, is saying, yeah, but it could be for this reason, it could be for that reason, it could be for any number of reasons. Well, when does it cross the threshold of good common sense saying, guess what? You know, it is, there is probable cause here to assume that there, there are more than three bedrooms being used for, you know.
It comes down to whether the, uh. It really all comes down to whether the court will accept that it's probable cause.
Okay.
And remember, you know, you talk about, you know, the. The person who's, you know. Who you'll be asking to go into their house, you're going to have a lawyer too.
Sure.
So they're going to come up with all of these same things.
But even our code enforcement officer can't, I mean, a neighbor comes up, they go through procedures, they call the billing department, ask the code enforcement office to investigate. If they don't get voluntary, uh, you know, approval to enter the house. Then. They can't. And they're asked to get off the property. So I don't know how you, you know, how you enforce that.
It's, it's a difficult scenario because you're talking about. This is, this is something that happens in somebody's home. Which is the, you're sort of the most difficult place to actually ever to gain entry to.
Yeah.
You know, by design.
Well, when it's advertised as an LLC, term my home. I don't know. I, it, it, it doesn't sit necessarily with the average homeowner that lives there three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You know, that's my home. That's not an LLC where people are changing every, every week or two weeks coming in and out. So. I don't know. There's a lot of frustration out there, I think, from part of the public. And I don't mean to beat the, you know, beat the dead horse here, but, uh. You know, people want to know a little bit about. When is the law on my side a little bit to protect my interest and my home value and, and my. Quality of life issues.
That's why.
And my environmental concerns, by the way. You know?
A little out of the box, but if you really wanted to get in for that type of scenario, you could always rent the place. Walk in.
I, I think, I think, Jim, I, I understand your point and, and the frustration that. People experience, but again, we have to make sure that.
Yeah.
They're doing it by the book.
Yeah, I, I get that, but I'm just saying.
I know, it's very frustrating.
They, you're a government official, you have to explain it.
Right.
It's very hard to explain when they say, you know.
Can't you? Yeah. Okay, okay, Bob, code enforcement.
The, uh, general term for, uh, any ordinance enforcement officer, fire marshal, building inspector, any other person authorized. Not to issue an appearance ticket, um. Under the town code. It's pretty. Benign.
So it's. It's not a specific position code enforcement. Even though we're going to create ones, it's also the building inspectors.
That's, yeah, civil service, uh, the, uh. The position we would have other than a building inspector, it would probably be an ordinance inspector.
Okay.
More ordinance enforcement.
Okay.
Energy code, basically it's. Your energy code, yeah. Fire marshal is duly appointed by the, uh, town of Shelter Island. Responsible for enforcing fire regulations, reviewing fire plans. Inspecting fire safety systems. And investigating fires. Fire show, or she'll also serve as fire protection officer. And a fire warden where such offices are required by the state of New York.
Okay.
The issues. Local codes, every local law ordinance authorized resolution. Resolution duly adopted by the town of Shelter Island, uh, town board. Or assigned a, uh. And assigned a chapter number and or section for the inclusion within the public code of the town of Shelter Island.
Okay.
NFPA is National Fire Protections Act. Ordinance enforcement officer, that's the, uh. Civil service title. Duly qualified and appointed town employee. Selected in accordance with the civil service laws of the state of New York, you shall enforce in this. All aspects of the uniform code, energy code, then the local code. With an emphasis on those actions not involving construction or demolition of a structure.
So, so in essence, what we're calling the code enforcement officer is really the ordinance enforcement officer?
Correct.
Okay.
Code enforcement can be done by building inspector.
Right.
Fire marshal.
Okay.
Notice of violation or to remedy is a. Order issued by a code enforcement officer, a building inspector required remediation of a. Violation of code within a certain time. Permit holder slash primity is any person or legal entity to whom a permit has been issued by the. Authority of the Shelter Island town code.
Bob, on that order to remedy. Is that ever, um. Is that just a lead? As I legal document that's handed to a property owner to, you, you must, uh. Or is there any, anything that we should build in there where there should be some type of follow up to the?
You know, order remedy is the first step. It's given and within, you have generally have thirty days. Uh, more fifteen days depending on the situation to. Correct the condition.
You're going to take care.
If you don't correct it, you can be issued what they call an appearance ticket to go to court.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, resolutions, any authorized resolution adopted by the Shelter Island town board, Shelter Island planning board, or zoning board of appeals. None of the other board with the resolution authority as prescribed by the town code. For the record, there are none.
Recognized. Okay.
Stop work order, an order issued by the building inspector or code enforcement officer directing that work on a project cease. For a specified period of time or until further notice. And until safety violations are resolved.
Now, is that, uh? Is that like by state law or is that just? Building the bomber's discretion or how does that work?
Uh, the stop work orders by, by town code. There is a section that goes into the specifics of how it functions. Uniform codes, New York State Uniform Fire Protection and Building Code is currently in effect. And amended from time to time, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, noise, noise, especially one that is. Or sound rather, especially one that is loud, unpleasant, or causes disturbance. The difference between noise and desired sound is a matter of perception, is thus judged on a reasonable standard. Okay, that's, that actually is, is all, is the current code. Cause noise appears in a few sections, we're going to put that in.
But when we actually get to address the noise ordinance, we'll get more specific with.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, local agency, all agencies, department boards, officers, and officers of the town of Shelter Island. Now, SECR is just a reference to the statute. Filming the taking of still or motion pictures. Either on film, videotape, or similar recording medium. For commercial purposes, for viewing on television or in theaters, or for use in print media.
Just to, you know, Bob, I never realized that still pictures actually, because I've seen that actually happen on Taylor's Island. I actually have gone out there and seen professional photographers taking pictures in the summer months of people in bathing suits, you know. Stretched out on a, on a, on that little walkway going out there. And I never realized that, you know, still photos. Actually are covered.
You're supposed to get.
Yeah. Supposed to get a permit for that. Yeah. I don't, they definitely did not have a permit for that.
Uh, private lands, any land not owned by the town of Shelter Island, the County of Suffolk, or the State of New York. Public lands, uh. any of, uh, every private street, highway, sidewalk, and or square, park, preserve, beach, playground, and any other public places in the town of Shelter Island, which is owned by or within the control of the town of Shelter Island. Appeals or requests for.
Bob, do we need to uh, do we need to talk about the uh, the beachfronts on that?
It does say beach.
It does say beach.
Well, it says beach, but I'm talking about below the high watermark.
Yeah, we can add that. Appeals or requests for review of administrative ruling or interpretation by the various departments of the town. Basement cellar, that portion of a building having its floor subgrade below the ground level on all sides.
Is that, uh, just to be clear on that, uh, obviously, the entire cellar does not have to be, it it, you know, I see most cellars are probably two-thirds, half to two-thirds below ground and and the top usually two to three feet of a cellar is above ground.
Right, it doesn't need to be completely, this is the building, the building code definition.
Okay, alright.
Wait a minute, but what if, what if the back of the house goes out to the land? It's not considered the basement then?
Depends what grade is for that particular house. That'd have to be figured by a you're an architect.
A lot of that.
Development, any man-made change to improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, paving, excavation, drilling operations, or storage of equipment or materials located within the area. Take that the flood hazard thing. Storage of materials.
What, what do you want to?
I just took.
Stop after materials?
I just took, yeah, added up materials.
So you're striking out located within.
Yeah. Yeah, we were trying to make it a little more general.
Okay.
Variants are granted relief from the requirements of the Shelter Island Town Code, which permits construction of a property in a manner that would otherwise be prohibited. One family dwelling, a detached structure building designed for or occupied exclusively by the living quarters by one family, including lodgers and or guests, a family being one housekeeping unit, and when not occupied by a family, by not more than two persons per each bedroom in such dwelling. Again, that's a building code definition. Two-family dwellings, the same thing for two families. Places of business, any residence, shop, places or premises from which business is transacted. Uh, residential property, any property used primarily for non-commercial and non-governmental use. This shall include one and two-family houses and property associated therewith, as well as all residential cabins and multifamily condominiums co-opted or apart. Sistern's a holding tank for water or other liquid generally underground used to prevent overuse of groundwater. Golf course, attractive land, maintained for playing the game of golf, whether publicly or privately owned. Town of Shelter Island recognizes two golf courses, Shelter Island Country Club and Rogers Bay Country Club. Irrigation system, uh, system for artificial or automatic application of water in the land, soil, or turf. Town board is one, the town board, duly elected constituted legislative body of the town of Shelter Island. Amplified sound is is the same now, sound which is has its volume increased by electronic means. A public right-of-way is any street, highway, road, street that is leased, owned, or controlled by a governmental entity. Clean Water Act is a ref- is a statutory reference. Premises, any tract of land, including structures, buildings, lots, parcels of land or portion of land, whether improved or unimproved, including adjacent sidewalks and parking strips. Uh, wastewater is water that is not stormwater, is contaminated with pollutants and or is will be discarded. That makes you probably be a little bit easement is a restriction or grant established in real estate deed to permit or the use of private land by a public agency or public utility for a specified purpose or to protect some special quality of the private land for a specified purpose, such as a scenic easement. Plat is not showing the arrangement of lots, blocks, streets, drainage parks, and other improvements, if any. Division of any parcel of land into two or more lots, blocks, sites, where there not such division creates new streets or extends existing streets and includes re-subdivision, except that any division of land which creates no more than two lots, which is the direct result of a dimensional variance created by the ZBA, shall not constitute a subdivision within the meaning of subdivision regulations. Swimming pool and enclosed container of water more than ten feet in length with a depth of twenty-four inches or more instructed for swimming or therapeutic purposes. A swimming pool may be above ground or in-ground uh, or within a building, an accessory structure consisting of an enclosure instructed above ground that contain water of sufficient depth for more than one person to swim and including all opportunity equipment. Advertising, any advertising uh or other form of communication for marketing that is used to encourage, persuade, or manipulate viewers, readers, or listeners into contacting for goods or services as may be viewed through various media, including but not limited to newspapers, magazines, flyers, handbills, television, commercials, radio, signage, direct mail, websites, email, or text messages by the owner and owner's agent. Alteration is a change or rearrangement to the structural elements of an existing structure or any enlargement or diminution of an existing structure or the moving of a building or structure from one location on the premises to another. The uniform code, any construction or renovation to an existing structure other than a repair or addition. It was just a note for the board there.
That would be like moving a shed from one side of your property to another.
Exactly. Uh, bed and breakfast is is our, is the same definition, we currently have an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling with no more than five rooms for rent for transient guests for overnight accommodations for no longer than fourteen days and serving no meals other than breakfast for guests.
So Bob, when we say owner-occupied, does it have to be the the actual owner of the property or owner's representative?
We are generally allowed it to be a representative, however, um, I believe New York State law actually requires it to be the owner themselves.
Really?
Do you actually have to be in the dwelling? Or can you be in a separate building on the property?
It's, it's on, it's supposed to be a single-family house.
Okay.
Um, but it doesn't talk about accessory buildings, so I think you could probably degree, you know, have some degree of leeway with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Border, roomer, or lodger as an individual, as a transient, or as not related to a member of family of the occupying dwelling or part thereof, for compensation who is furnished with sleeping accommodations or with or without meals. Boarding house is a building arranged for or used for lodging for compensation with or without meals and not occupied as a single-family unit.
So is there any timeframe on boarding or rooming house?
There's not a timeframe on a boarding house, that's generally expected to be more long-term as opposed to the short-term bed and breakfast. But it's not specified in code.
Is there such a thing as a boarding house? Okay.
You might be able to classify, you know, gentlemans as a boarding house. Uh, fence structure designed to limit access to an area or screen an area from view or both. Home office, the business office, um, of an individual would provide a service rather than the retail sale of goods, i.e. providing the services, consulting, advertising, designing, contracting, and marketing, and which typically requires a home personal computer, telephone, and or fax, teletransition if they still make those.
Bob, when you get back to Jerry's point about boarding house or rooming house, workforce housing type of thing where people have built. I mean, it's the compensation is obviously considered because they're providing housing, you know, as part of your job. I I don't see any def- definition here for workforce housing, so would that be, would that be construed as boarding or rooming house?
Well, we can do one of two ways, you could either, probably could construe it as a boarding house. If you want, we can create a definition for workforce house.
With, with your pleasure, because I, I think it's obviously a term that's gonna be used, you know, workforce housing is. It doesn't fit the definition of boarding or rooming house.
We can do that.
Well, I mean, we're trying to do broad definitions here and that would fall under.
I mean, the way I see it, I mean, right above it, you have a definition of border, roomer, or lodger, which is an individual who is a transient. Then you have boarding or rooming house, so it's arranged for lodging. So is it arranged for lodging for a border or a roomer who are transients?
Well, they're not transients, I mean, they're, they're working here.
Yeah, but no, but I'm saying the definition right above it is border and roomer and they're transients.
Well, I'm ju- I'm just saying it's a term that's often thrown around that needs
Right.
to be defined somewhere in in this code, you know, if we change, we're working on terminology here.
All right, let's, let's.
I'll work on that one a bit. Make a note of that.
Okay. Home occupation.
Home occupation. Any use customarily conducted by the inhabitants on the property, which is uses clearly and incidental, clearly incidental and secondary to the principal use of the property as a dwelling. It does not change the character of thereof. Uh, the foregoing applies to also to professions and trades. Lot is a continuous parcel of land and the same ownership throughout with boundaries established through one or more recorded deeds which meet the lot area and with requirements and other regulations applicable to the time of creation. A lot shall also mean parcel plots, site, and other similar term.
Okay.
Okay, open space, any lands within the town characterized by natural scenic beauty or whose open character, natural condition, or present state, if retained, would retain, enhance the present or potential value of the adjacent surrounding or nearby lands and or development, or would maintain or enhance the conservation of natural cultural or scenic resources.
Okay.
Owner-occupied is premises where the owner is similar, you know, similar self-identity domiciled on the same or adjacent premises with tenant and its rental term. Finally, yard sale. Temporary or occasional display of sale to the public of new previously owned or used items for personal property from a residential property that is owned or controlled by the person holding the sale for the purposes of chapter yard sales includes, but is not limited to garage sales, large sales, attic sales, et cetera, et cetera. Or any casual sale of tangible personal property upon residential premises. Uh, the term yard sale does not include the mere incidental sale of one or two items of personal property when such sale is not a part of the general sale or number of personal properties.
And that's good, that's good to add because of a person selling a boat or trailer or a car or something like that, they can continue to put a for-sale sign on it without being called the yard sale.
Okay.
Uh, that lot, I just went.
Yeah, go ahead.
The label is, uh, labor this, but anything about an unbuildable lot, you know, it has come up in Silver Beach where a person went on an auction in Suffolk County, bought a lot which they thought was buildable, but that when they actually hired somebody to put something in there, it was declared unbuildable. So we, can we define the difference between lot and unbuildable lot?
No, it's still a lot.
It's, it's no lot, I get that.
We generally, as a matter of course, we've discussed this at length with the building department, don't have a general characterization of what would be a buildable or an unbuildable lot.
Alright.
Because any lot, regardless of size, you can always go to the zoning board and request a variance to be able to build upon it. Uh, even if there's no building envelopes, what will tell people is whether or not there's a building envelope on the lot.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, uh, all right, so Bob, so we, we made some notes of things we're gonna look at before we uh conclude this, I'll go over those with you. The next part you have is the uh, uh, section sixteen.
Uh, yeah, I only, this was just distributed to the board today, so
Yeah.
give people a little bit of time to read it rather than.
Right, so just, just, we're not gonna go through it, but just walk us through what it, what, what's here and what you want us.
This is a one of our, you know, we are, the way that we do things here, um, as far as the structure of town government really should be memorialized in code and the positions we have should be, you know, and will periodically fill, need to be, uh, really should be set out and uh, and to discuss the, you know, the authority, we have to create those positions and a lot of these, you know, are state mandates, um. What this is, is basically a rewrite of our public officers section to kind of cover those situations and you know, make sure that we've talk about how the committees are structured, talk about how the departments are structured, at least on a very basic level.
So if we can look at this for next week, we'll, we'll go over this, okay? Okay, uh, thanks, Bob. All right, we're gonna go around on board member reports, then we're gonna uh close the work session and have a special meeting on the town budget, then we have three o'clock interviews for committees. So, uh, Albert, any board member reports?
I do have.
Okay, Amber?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Jim?
Yep. Capital planning grants.
Jim, they're not conceding their time to you.
Boy, when you get a reputation, they beat you to death with it. The capital planning grants committee met this morning. On the old business, we looked at the four feasibility studies, wastewater reuse project and upgrading of the heights treatment plant. We've hosted two meetings in the past three weeks, the first one was attended by Stella Legoudis, Joe Fenora, and Jim Coligan, and the last one included the three of us along with Supervisor Siller and Steve Cluff from Hazen and Sawyer. These two meetings focused upon four issues. Number one, the nondisclosure agreement. Number two, the possibility of conducting a second feasibility study that examines the groundwater flow modeling at Shelter Island Country Club and the possible impacts of irrigation and or recharge of the aquifer at the golf course. Possible impacts to the existing wells along New York Avenue. This is, uh, you know, kind of represents a stumbling block or a crossroads for the, for the committee. That second item. Number three, paying for this additional study if we choose to go with that route. Uh, Jim has asked Jennifer, that's our grants writer, to look into possible funding assistance. And the fourth thing is all alternative plans based upon the three original goals of the project. The three original goals being eliminating the, any contaminant from the Shelter Island Sound, recharging the aquifer up at the golf course, and irrigating the golf course. Uh, so obviously, there are some other things that we need there. Uh, as Joe stated, we are at a crossroads in this project based upon the regulatory agency requirements, sensitivity to the public, uh, well supply, Westneck Water, and the Shelter Highland Property Owners Corp well, water and wells, and available resources on how best to advance the project. Fresh Pond Studying, Joe has been working for the last three and a half months with. Fresh Pond Studying, Joe has been working for the last three and a half months with Lombardo Associates and with the Fresh Pond Neighbors Association. They continue to finish up the data collection on the pond, which has gone probably a month longer than we intended, but it's a good thing because we're getting additional data as the pond cools off. Joe will be meeting with them tomorrow on him, on their monthly call. The Shelter, the Fresh Pond Neighbors Association are very satisfied with the data collected thus far. And the final report should be made available to them and to the town board in November of this year in about four weeks.
So Jim, when we get that report, will they make recommendations of what to do next?
Sure. I think, I think the report's gonna do, and if Joe's on the line, he can kick in right here.
He's out of West Neck Water today.
Okay. Two, two, two things that you'll see happen, you know, namely, what kind of pollutants are we talking about? What's causing the source of pollution? And how best to eliminate that? I think the report will cover all of those things. You know, in terms of clean, and there'll be options available. Seeing the municipal wastewater treatment study, Joe Lombardo Association's associates have just kicked off their early phases of feasibility study, beginning with visiting the various locations of town buildings and assets that will be part of the study. These site, these site visits are just a first step in determining exactly what kinds of septic systems are currently in place and a general appreciation for the size and scope of the municipal area that is being considered in this study. Note, Shelter Island School is not part of this study and has moved forward independently with their efforts to install two new IA OWTS systems on their property. So that study is just kicking off.
Okay, just a little addition to that is we are in contact with the school.
Okay.
And because we started ours and they have their plans in place, but they're looking for some help with possible funding and not town funding, grant funding. So we're looking at the possibility of maybe putting the projects together or how we can work together.
Yeah. So, so I, I think Dr. Doldger has been in contact with both the supervisor and myself with the grants. And I put him in contact with Jennifer, our grants writer. She has already engineered some feedback back to the superintendent on how to proceed with that. Superintendent has asked her, and I think we're probably going to come up with some type of agreement, but Jennifer is going to pick up some additional powers during the course of a month, working for the school. They'll be built independently of the town. But Jennifer will become a kind of a part-time grants writer to help them, especially through this project and maybe moving forward. And I think Brian on opening, Dr. Doldge on the opening comments was very pleased with his first encounter with our grants writer. In terms of real point study, nothing really new to report. We're still awaiting approval of funding from the United States Senate. Once that happens, the Army Corps will commence the feasibility study. Terms of Crescent Beach Bathroom Update. Brian stated that the set of specs with the current plans have been submitted with a bid package and is due back not later than October 18th, 2021. This package is just for the bathroom trailer itself. Brian also mentioned that the plans do not call for a concrete slab, which is what we originally wanted, but will be adapted to meet county requirements by utilizing a modified concrete platform instead. So we're kind of working around that. Jennifer reminded us that we need to meet the MWBE requirement set forth by the state and recommended listing this on the New York State Contractors Report in order to satisfy and make a record of this effort. And you do get penalized by not doing it and it's up to 30% of a brand and that's costly for us. So obviously we're gonna, we're gonna make the effort, we're gonna document the effort. She also mentioned that we might be able to purchase materials for the project by utilizing a company that does meet this requirement. So that would save us, you know, literally several thousands of dollars. Item number three is the update of the multi-year capital plan. Jennifer, Joe and Amber have been working on that. It's been an ongoing process for three months. Jennifer stated that she met with both Amber and Joe yesterday, and they continue to make progress on the development of the town's multi-year capital plan. Their focus has been on town infrastructure, including marine assets. Amber has been working periodically with Shelby as well, pulling out specific, specific projects when they are being slated to be done, how much they will cost and the funding resources that will pay for them. So we, the capital plan is actually coming together. And it just, if everybody sits tight, while we're working on budget, I think it's going to take us another month or two to get through that. But we are going to have a capital plan that will, will be able to, as a town board, be able to see what's online for 2022, 2023 and 2024. So there are no surprises coming out. We're gonna actually have a capital plan that has a vision out from the current year. Item number four, recycling center roof. Brian will be hosting a pre-conference meeting with members of the highway department, and if possible, Joe Fenora, if he's available tomorrow. The crane is on loan from Cockles Harbor and is on site. The actual paving of the parking lot, the area of the recycling equipment could begin next week. Due to safety concerns, all construction of the roof are scheduled to be done on Wednesdays, but will be reevaluated by Brian and Joe moving forward and coordinating their efforts with the supervisor. Item number five, Dawn Lane bulkhead replacement. Brian reports some of the materials, in fact, most of the materials have arrived on site and they are being stored at Dawn Lane. Brian stated that all the materials have arrived, but anticipates that the work will begin shortly, shortly, and that's being done by Crowley Marine. Item number six, Shelter Island Community Center. Brian reports there will be no new requirements until after the. We're trying to get no new requirements done there because of the Garth Griffin dedication, which has now been moved to November 6th to accommodate family and friends, which would, the original date conflicted with the golf outing with many of his friends would be on. So we did move that thing. The new date for that is Saturday, November 6th at 3:00 PM in the Shelter Island Community Center across the street. Obviously Veterans Day happens five days later, the following week. So the recreation department is hoping that the preliminary work can be completed prior to Veterans Day so that the construction for the new ADA compliant walkway and entrance and the front doors and the new overhang porch area and roof can begin in a timely fashion to get done. Can this happen, I asked, and Brian stated that he is meeting with contractors concerning the concrete steps, walkway and entranceway, and with the replacement of the front porch and roof. This project is being funded in part by a New York State grant, and if all goes well, he hopes to complete this project by late December 2021, depending on weather conditions. Jennifer's updates, that's our grants writer, stated that the town has submitted a letter of intent for the design and engineering services for the plazas, plaza areas of both ferry terminals. Those are the four terminals, two on Shelter Island, one in Greenport, one in North Haven. This has been accomplished with the help and assistance of both Chief Reed and Joe Fenora, our town engineer. The estimated cost is around $130,000 for the engineering piece, of which 75% of that 130 is eligible for federal funding, which we're working on, and 25% would be paid through the town. And obviously you can't do this kind of a project without engineering it properly. So that's not a given, like what are you doing spending money on engineering? It's, 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 it's the number one project listed on our town mitigation plan and has the highest priority. So we're determined to try to get this through. These funds originate at the federal level, but are administered by New York State Homeland Security. Under new business, fall road paving projects, Brian has just met with Gorzini Asphalt, and the fall road paving project should begin within the next two weeks. They need to coordinate with the North Ferry, which they are doing today to accommodate the trucks in a timely manner because obviously bringing that product across, we have to have an extra ferry on board that day. Brian is still working up with New York, local New York officials to recover $167,000 from a 2008 grant on the Mark Getcham's tenure as highway superintendent. He also stated that he might be asking the state for additional monies to help raise Ram Island Road from Cobbitt's Lane northward to Stonewall and, and that would be covering all the low lying areas of Ram Island Road. So that would be a second major project. That too is on the mitigation plan. The meeting was adjourned at 9:33. Our next meeting is going to be held at, on November 3rd. And we're going to, we decided to move it to 9:00 AM rather than 8:30. The meetings have been going well. We've been averaging maximum an hour. Some meetings have been as short as 30, 35 minutes because either I'm getting better or talking faster or not talking at all, and the meetings are progressing at a timely manner. So we're moving it to nine o'clock. I think it, it, it helps out everybody being able to get there on time and get, get the meeting started. Thank you very, very much. And we have a deer and tick meeting tomorrow. I'm going to, we're going to learn a little bit about this new disease that's impacting deer here in Suffolk County, of course, New York State. I'll, I'll report to you back next week on that. And the other thing I wanted to mention was. Oh. Jerry, we obviously got this form letter directed back to the new governor in reference to signing this for the iconic Bay Region Community Housing Fund Act. And so.
I sent one to the supervisor. We should send one to the town board also.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So everybody is aware of this, is what's the efforts that are going on there to include the extra percentage to help be designated to.
This is the one the Assembly in the state passed two years ago and the governor vetoed.
Correct.
Now we're hoping the new governor will sign it. Jim, just real quick. We had gotten a letter this morning from Jen, I don't know if it was before or after your meeting, that the New York State accepted our preliminary application for the ferry terminals. So we're onto the next phase of the application process.
Right.
So that's, that's really good news.
Yeah. And, and by the way, just for anybody, you know, we could never do these projects without grant funding, you know, I mean, it's just mission, be mission impossible. We, you know, with the amount of infrastructure stuff that we're looking at and trying to get done, you know, when you can get 75% of the cost paid, and that's the real reason why at Real Point, we haven't taken the initiative and started the project which was done three and a half years ago with the first study out there. Because the Army Corps is going to kick in about, you know, hopefully about 67% of that, they said, between 65 and 70. So they could pick up two thirds of that cost. That's a good thing.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Bobby, you have anything for us? Okay. Bob?
I think I've talked enough for the day.
I think you've talked enough too. Okay. Any comments, questions from the audience? Julie? Pam?
Yeah. Hi there, everybody. I'm just listening to the conversation about the changes in definitions and I am certainly concerned about the one of residency. In the last meeting, the town attorney mentioned that this was not going to be a dramatic change, but it certainly does look like one. And the 11 points in the code where it is effective, I don't think you've certainly had enough time to go over as Councilman Amber Brock Williams had mentioned, and we have it here, the town employment, the parking permits, the shell fishing, the waterways, the moorings, the docks, the beaches, the peddling and soliciting, the committees, the boats and community housing. I mean, this is major change and I don't, and I just looked at a couple of those chapters where the definition of resident is there. And yeah, there are subtle differences, but this new definition encompasses a whole lot more than the subtle differences of what exists in today's town code. So I'm really very concerned about it. I'm wondering what's precipitating this tremendous change in the definition of a resident. And I think the other thing we have to look at is what the definition of a non-resident is. And I don't think that that's been taken into consideration in comparison to the two. And I would hope that you would look into that further before making any definition change in regard to residents of Shelter Island at this point.
And voting rights?
And, and you know, it affects other things like voting rights. You know, it just encompasses so much to, to make this kind of a change. I also question the part it has about the parks, the definition on parks, what's with the shoreline access points and that it's public and private. I'm not sure I get the problem with the days. How are we counting days, Monday to Friday or not? There is no ordinance code enforcer, and I know you were looking for someone for that position. And we also do not have a fire marshal as far as I'm aware. So a lot of things came up today that I noticed and I, and I just hope that you address all of them one by one and diligently before making any decisions.
Well, we're not making any decisions. We're continuing the discussion first of all. Second of all, we do have a code enforcement officer. The building, the building inspectors are code enforcement officers. We do have a fire marshal that we appointed. And we're, again, we're addressing all these issues. We're not, we're not. We're not jumping into anything. We're putting it out to the public like we do with everything else we do. We talk about it here. Now we're going back to the WMAC because that's where this whole residency thing started, that we want to clear a definition of what a resident is. So we're going back to them and then we'll bring it back to a work session and discussion, discuss it some more.
Yeah, I do understand that the building inspector, there is currently the code enforcement officer, but I know that you folks have had conversations about hiring one specifically to be the ordinance officer, as Bob just recognized that there's a difference there. You know, the building inspector does, I know the building inspector has a lot on his plate. I think he's the wetlands officer too. I don't know that there's anyone specific with that position. So.
Yes. And when I make the buzzer presentation, you'll see that we're putting in for a full-time code enforcement officer.
So that role Pam is actually being expanded because of the need. I mean, there's just, it's, it's, you know, one of the things that, you know, we constantly hear criticism about is the lack of enforcement of, of code. So having one person that's designated strictly for code enforcement is, is huge. So that person is, you know, working on a variety of things in the building department, also working on the rental situations. You know, so he's getting, getting, he's a quick learner. I'm very confident he'll be able to, you know, expand his role in 2022.
Yes, I know you're getting more applications now than ever before.
Okay, thank you. Julie, Julia, any questions?
No, thanks, Jerry.
I'm fine, Jerry.
Okay, I'm gonna make a.
I, I just, I just, some of us, we should have said something about Saturday's, you know, you know, event at, at Wade's Beach. On behalf of the town board and, and, you know, we just want to thank the group of people that got together to organize this and it's led very much by Susan Bender and Darren. You know, obviously Susan did an awful lot, you know, Brett Sarares. Chief Reed was an integral part of this, making things happen. The one comment that I, I just saw from everybody, we probably had about 350 people in attendance throughout the entire four hours. Probably at no time did it exceed more than 225 or 240, but people kind of were coming and going. The two bands were perfect. We started off some soft music, we ended up with the, you know, band playing 4:30 to 6:30. The weather was, you know, perfect, a nice breeze. Food, we had more food than we could possibly imagine. Like to thank all the restaurants that, and people that donated food and people that cook food for it. People that volunteered their time and Amber was there, you know, working for four hours nonstop. And, and a whole bunch of other people that were there that, you know, this couldn't have happened without them. And it was, it was a great thing. It was, it was nice to see the, the community come together. And can't think of a, of a nicer event that we've had in an awful long time. It was a perfect place. And I just, and, and we needed to honor the people we needed to honor. I don't, I was kind of disappointed we didn't see more of the nurses from, you know, that, that actually were part of, but many of our Shelter Island nurses were there. I know both papers are probably going to do stories on it and do a much better job than what I'm doing right now in terms of, you know, being able to capture the event. But it was, it was special. It was very, very nice and it was good for the community. We needed it. But on behalf of the town board, thank you. Thank you very, very much to Dr. Doldge, school board for opening up your school for those four pods that we were able to inoculate, you know, literally several thousand vaccines and for the cooperation of everybody. It was just, it was just a very, very nice event.
And thank you to the Lions.
Oh, yes. My gosh. The Lions Club was co-sponsored by the town and the Lions Club. And you can't say enough good things about the Lions Club and their organization and what they do in this town. They're a tremendous, tremendous organization.
Yeah, it was a beautiful day. It was a beautiful time and it's really what Shelter Island is all about. Okay, now we're gonna. Okay, now we're going to, Bobby, do we have to make a motion to go into a special meeting or? Okay, so we're going to close the work session and go into our two thousand two budget meeting. Okay, and I would like to read the supervisor's tentative budget message, and then I'm just going to go over the highlights of the budget, then then we'll make it, make our schedule going forward. Let me read this, then we'll give them. Okay. As Chief Financial Officer of the Town of Shelter Island, it is my responsibility to present a tentative budget for the year twenty twenty two. Deputy Supervisor Amber Brock Williams and Account Clerk Shelby Mundy have worked with me to put together this year's proposal. This year's budget proposal is aimed at beefing up specific areas of town government as well as addressing some salary inequities. I am proposing to continue to expand the role of user fees in the town's anticipated revenues as opposed to taxing the general public for user specific items. Some examples of this would be an increase in contractor licenses from one hundred dollars for two years to two hundred and fifty dollars for one year. Certain permit fees will also be raised on recommendations from the building department. I'm also proposing a raise in the mooring fees, an additional twenty five dollars per mooring per year. The last time there was an increase here was twenty two years ago. I feel that all waterways related expenses should be coming from that fund. We will also be charging commercial landscapers to dump leaves and clippings at the landfill. The town's cost to maintain and process these materials has grown exponentially over the years, and this fee will help absorb the cost increase. I believe these fees are all part of the cost of doing business. These costs will be passed on from the contractors to the specific customers as opposed to having to be absorbed by the overall tax base. Other areas I am projecting increases in anticipated revenues are mortgage tax, parking permits and landfill revenues. Just like last year, these are conservative projections. Based on last year's and this year to date numbers, we should easily exceed these projections. In the building department with Christian's retirement, Brett Polshuck will become a full time building inspector. We will be adding a full time code enforcement officer as well as a part time clerk. I'm also budgeting for a second electric car for the department. I am also proposing creating the position of administrative assistant to the supervisor and town board. The needs and responsibilities of town government continue to grow, and it is incumbent on us to provide the proper staffing to be able to serve the public. The biggest addition to the budget, both financially and conceptually, is creating a new position in the emergency services department. With some retirements pending and with need for critical care oversight, the EMS department and I are proposing paid advanced life support coverage, beginning with seven days per week for twelve hours per day. Overall, the proposed amount to be raised by taxes for the year twenty twenty two is ten million, six hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and five dollars. An increase of four percent, four percent from the previous year. The next step is for the town board to review this proposal and to make the changes they deem appropriate. You know, I'll go over the, Bobby, you want to hand out the books? And I'm just going to go over the the major areas, and then we'll schedule appointments and who we want to, what departments we would like to talk to.
We just I was just, names on them or no?
Thanks, Bobby.
Did you need one or you don't have one?
This is mine.
Yeah, I made one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thanks, yeah.
Yeah.
Can never have enough.
Just, just a comment, the town board, and I know Albert and I, this is the first time, you know, we're seeing these kind of numbers. We haven't been working on it, this has strictly been between the three of you, the two of you, and of course Shelby. I have to, for a first step, wow, you know, this is my sixth or seventh time going through the the town budget. I'm used to seeing, you know, eight, ten, twelve, it's been sixteen point eight, close to seventeen percent before we get it. So to see it at four percent as we're coming through is a breath of fresh air. It shows a lot of responsible decision making based on things where you've taken the time to, and and that was really important. I think the message that you got out to the departments beforehand about being prudent has really paid off. I think the decisions that we're making about whether we're adding staff or putting in a new electric vehicle and everything else is consistent with where we want to go as a town to being more green and more able to enforce code and and to do the kinds of things that we need to get done in our mitigation plans and taking care of our assets around town. So, you know, I think it's a great start. I look forward to us meeting as a town board, the four of us. Hopefully, you know, we'll be able to, again, we're not making any promises, we don't have any number in mind of where we want to go with this. But one thing that we want to do is we want to make good, sound, responsible fiscal decisions that support the efforts of where we want to go as a town. So I want to thank personally, thank Jerry, Amber and Shelby for doing a great job, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim. All right, so I'm just going to give a quick synopsis of the major impacts.
It's Julia Brennan, I just wanted to know if there was an electronic copy of that available anywhere.
Yes, I have it from Shelby and I, my computer just rebooted, so I will send that to you and Julie Lane momentarily.
Thanks so much, I really appreciate it.
It won't be paginated, but so we'll try and talk in terms of account codes when we go through it.
Great, thanks so much.
Okay, so first, we're going to reinstate the two percent increase for all elected officials after one year suspension. Next, we're going to increase salaries anywhere from two to five percent, depending on existing contracts and current rates of pay. I'm proposing we create some new positions, administrative assistant to the supervisor and town board at a salary of forty five thousand dollars, a code enforcement officer at a salary of fifty four thousand, six hundred dollars. A part time clerk to the building department at twenty, and you don't have to write all this down because we're going to go over.
No, I'm not.
Part time clerk to the building department, twenty three thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. The EMS advanced life support coverage, one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And a new electric car for the building department, a second electric car for the building department at thirty four thousand dollars. On the revenue side, we're projecting an additional fifty five thousand dollars from the contractor license fees. We're projecting an increased fifty one thousand dollars from the permit fees that we the building department has made, proposed changes for us. We're proposing an additional twenty thousand dollars in leaves at the landfill. Twelve thousand dollars in our board storage permits. And that's it on the revenues for a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in additional revenue. I also didn't put in the mortgage tax, I didn't put in numbers for the mortgage tax, but we'll go over that when we go line by line. The other thing I'd like to do, as I mentioned it in the letter, is I feel very strongly on the user fee concept. And I would try, I tried to look at anything that I felt was waterways related and see how we can take it out of the taxpayers' domain and use the waterways management advisory funds for that. And I'm looking at in the in the public works, the boat equipment that's used obviously for the waterways, buoys and lifelines, town landings, dredging and boat maintenance, and from the police account, boat equipment and boat maintenance. And that comes to thirty six thousand, eight hundred dollars. With the new employees, we're looking at increased in benefits. We have be thirty four, a total increase of seventy, almost seventy eight thousand dollars in benefits. And that includes benefits for our animal control officer, which she doesn't currently get. Then, let's see. Well, the mortgage tax, we, last year, we we adopted and modified the budget to our anticipated revenue of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The first half of the year this year, we have over five hundred thousand dollars. So conservatively, you know, saying the market might not stay as much as it is, we're projecting five hundred thousand for next year. So we already got that at half the year this year, so I think that's a safe projection.
Historically, we used to budget five hundred thousand.
Okay.
So it lines up with previous prior years.
Okay. Okay, all right, again, so those are, those are the big things. Obviously, the biggest one is the is the EMS. The couple of new positions we're talking about and some of the increase in fees for revenues. So that's basically where we are. I guess now let's set up a schedule of when we're going to meet and who we're going to see.
Do we need Shelby here or she's probably listening?
Now, what are the days you're going to be out of town?
Sixteenth through the twenty fourth.
Of October, right?
And we normally adopt this shortly after the election or is it later? It's
Yeah.
It's like November fifth or something, right?
November third.
Third, okay.
All right, so we need to get
Yeah. First election day is the second.
All right, do we want to do anything this week or start next week? Next week's a short week because of Columbus Day on Monday.
I'd like to start this meeting.
Thursday?
Thursday for everybody.
Thursday, yeah, the only thing I have is at three o'clock in the afternoon, I'm with the Jim, Chief Reed, Superintendent Doldger and and they, and we're doing the work on the mental health thing, so we have a meeting at three o'clock.
There's a six o'clock meeting.
So anything in
Let's do something in the morning.
In the morning, so let's, yeah, let's, let's on the seventh, which
So say nine to twelve?
Yeah.
Okay. Nine AM, twelve PM.
Anything on Friday?
No.
Please no.
Okay, Monday, no, Monday's a holiday. How about Tuesday, there's no board meeting, there's no work session.
Correct, yeah. What's that, nine AM harassment discrimination training, are we involved in that?
That's, yeah, that's one of those things we have to take.
Yeah, everybody.
Online things.
So, so, so we can't be meeting for
It's a webinar, what, what time is that?
Nine AM, I have it written down as.
You don't have to take that particular one, Jeff, if it's not convenient time for you.
No, it's not for me, it's for us, just saying, I just noticed I have it written on a calendar.
What's that? Once a year? Yeah, so if you've done it, if you've done it in this calendar year since January, you're good, otherwise you have to do it again.
But that's not being done in this room, correct?
No, it's a webinar.
That's a webinar. Can you take that, I mean, can that be taped and we can do it on our leisure?
You do it your own leisure.
Oh, good, all right, all right, so we're not
Around some links.
So let's, let's, let's go nine to twelve on the twelve.
Would good for this year, would that?
If you, yeah, I think if you've done it this year, yes.
My budget.
What do you say?
Who's taken it this year already?
Nine AM to twelve PM on nine, want to go earlier, let's go earlier, I don't care.
What day, where, where are we, what day?
Tuesday, ten, twelve.
What do you mean like?
No, I can't start early, I got, I have to get my morning started. I can't.
Nine AM to twelve, okay. All right, we have the, we have the
We have a work session Wednesday. No, we have the continuation of WMAC meets when, they meet Wednesday.
They meet at six o'clock.
So we won't have the residency discussion, so we'll have to wait on that. So we'll do mostly, we'll do this, let's, let's schedule this for Wednesday.
And stay the thirteen?
Yeah.
Okay, nine to twelve again?
Well, either that or which, if you want to do that and then go to a work session or do an early work session, a quick work session and go write the budget.
It would nine to twelve.
Okay.
I would be
Okay.
Yeah, also, because weren't we going to have people come in to talk about the contractor's license? Because we didn't do it this week.
Yes.
We're doing it
Nine to twelve, okay. So it's Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
That's three days, we have a total of nine hours, nine hours right there.
Over the fourteenth and fifteenth.
And I am, I am
I'm not good on the fourteenth.
Okay. Amber, if you're not good, we're not good. You want to go on to fifteenth then, that's a day before you leave, though, right?
That's fine.
Are you going to be packed, you'll have to come over there and pack you? I'm kidding.
What day is the fifteenth, Friday?
Friday.
Okay.
So Friday, the fifteenth would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, just morning now, right?
Yeah.
The nine to twelve.
That's fine.
Yeah, see how we get through.
I think we should be able to get through.
Yeah, so you have twelve hours right there.
So who, who, well, go through the book and then schedule people to come in that we want.
Yep, Shelby will take care of that, yeah.
Thursday. Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. All right.
I mean, the big ones obviously are the police department, the highway department, and this year will be the ambulance. Those three. Yeah, yeah, those are the three big ones, then we'll, you know, see whether else we want the seniors or recreation or whoever else you want.
Nice, so today we're starting interviews at three o'clock?
Yes.
I'm just to talk about the budget for a second, so we have to do the public hearing by November fourth, so we'll do it
We're at the
Well, no, we, I mean
Then you have until the twenty eighth to the
Right. Right.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I, I guess we'll say we're going to have the public hearing on November third then.
No, we're going to set the
No, it has to be done on November third. So Yeah, so it doesn't follow
So we have to, so so I, we have to have three weeks before you have to set it.
Yeah.
With the numbers.
No, not with the numbers.
Oh, we don't need the numbers? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So we just need to get it into
Okay. Good, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so
I think we're good, Jeff.
Okay.
I'll be disappointed with by the fifteenth, we're not done.
Yeah, I think so, I think we'll be in good shape, yeah.
Pretty good, you know, I mean, where it was was three and four and five years ago, you know, that was, that was a
Yeah, and
Looking for one million dollars.
And there's not a lot to ask, really, I mean, you know, pretty much everything we put in, that Amber and I put in, we, you know, we we can justify, but we'll bring the departments in to go over them with us. All right, so Julie and Julia will get that out to you today.
Done.
Oh, it's done, they're getting sent a letter too. Okay.
With Shelby.
All right, everybody, any other questions before we leave for the
Now, a couple of minutes before the first interview.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say recess this meeting.
Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.